Okay, I call to order the May 1st Hybrid Workshop Meeting of Highland Park Fourth Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure that we're in the public, to have advanced notice of them to attend the meetings of public bodies on which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Highland Park Fourth Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted to publication to our own news tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns from the meeting. Another for the roll call? Here. I'm like, where's her napkin? Ms. Coleman? She's not here this morning. Ms. Galloway? Mr. Kringer?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, De Nicola? Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Roslovich?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Mr. Woodruff?
Here.
Okay, we're going to recess to executive session. Being resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10, colon, 4, dash, 13, the Highland Park Fourth Education will now be in closed session to discuss personnel. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10, colon, 4, dash, 13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So I make a motion that we recess to executive session?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, call us back. Recommeend to regular workshop session. I move that we convene to regular workshop session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Final allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had three communications this month, not this month, since last week, I guess. And they were all related to our, the scores that came out through the NJDOA that we're going to be talking about next meeting, or actually the host who talked about next meeting. We have no minutes to approve, I think? So we're moving on to the student representative report. So you are on.
For Irving School, a huge thanks to our PTO for an amazing used book sale last week. Everyone loved the event. We look forward to celebrating our staff next week for Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, that is from May 8th to the 12th. We are thankful for every week of the year and appreciate all you do. We will have our PTO sponsor plant sale from May 10th to the 12th. Stop by our beautiful annuals and veggies to plant in your gardens. For Bardell's, the high school drama club did a teaser of Newsies for Bardell students on April 28th. Field Day will be on May 12th at the high school. Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week is May 8th to 12th. We can't wait to celebrate our amazing staff. Also, the PTO plant sale is May 8th to May 12th. And NJSL testing begins on Tuesday. For middle school, we look forward to celebrating our staff as well for Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week from May 8th to 12th. And please sign up for the 5K race on May 7th. All proceeds go to the HP Schools PTO groups. On May 5th and 6th at 7:00 p.m., and for the high school, on May 5th and 6th at 7:00 p.m., and May 7th at 5:00 p.m. in the Robert Stevens Auditorium, our drama club will be presenting Newsies. Please purchase tickets and come out to support our thespians in this fantastic production. Also, testing is upon us during this month of May. Advanced placement tests, advanced placement exams will be administered in person using paper-based testing for our students as scheduled from today to the 12th of May. Students taking AP exams will be excused from participation in classroom sessions and will be allowed to hand in any work due to exam day late without penalty, especially with students preparing for multiple exams on consecutive dates. Specific information regarding exam requirements, the dates for specific exams, and signing in and out procedures, however ready and shared by Ms. Hayes, our AP coordinator and individual AP teachers. Also, May 15th to May 25th, 9th, 10th, 11th graders will be taking the NJSL. 9th grade students will take the ELA 9 assessment. 9th and 10th grade students will take the Algebra 1 or Geometry Assessment, depending on what they enrolled in. Students in Algebra 2 or above are not assessed. 11th grade students will take the NJSL Science Assessment. On May 25th at 7:00 p.m., junior prom will be held in the high school dining hall. All of our juniors and their dates attended, we dress formally, and will enjoy our wonderful buffet meal donated by their parents. Proceeds from this evening are used to offer the cost of their senior prom next year. For more information, see Mr. Rock, Mr. Rockwood. Lastly, the Project Graduation Committee is looking for junior parents to chaperone Project Graduation this year. Email Katherine Pelican at pelican@gmail.com to sign up.
Well done. Thank you. Is that all that's going on? Thank you for doing double duty there as well. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report, which is our budget presentation. Just for the sake of process, Dr. Nikosia will present the budget and talk about it. We will then open course to the board for questions and then to the public. The first public questions will be only on the budget itself, the first public comment period. Then we'll go to the budget, I believe, and then move on to regular workshop items. And there'll be another public comment at the end of the meeting on any topic. So that's our process. Dr. Nikosia, you're on.
Good evening. Thank you. Just give me one minute to settle. Michelle, can you see okay? Is it, we're all good? All right, well, I see it off your screen, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I just want to start the budget hearing tonight by reviewing some of the information that we discussed in the preliminary budget, just to reorient and refocus ourselves in terms of the fiscal budget planning process year to year. So just a reminder that we align our budget with a couple of key points. First, we align our budget with district goals and objectives. We have to align our budget with the ESEA, which is Elementary and Secondary Education Acts, with ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, and with the New Jersey Student Learning Objectives or Learning Standards. So we align our budget with those key, in those key areas. In terms of our budget planning process, obviously, we, like I said last time in our preliminary budget hearing, myself and our business administrator, Ms. Hopola, meet with each administrator in December, go through their wish list items, their wants and needs, and then we actually kind of take a look at it at that point and discuss, you know, if we can, if it's something that we agreed to wanting to support, can we support it, especially if it's a new initiative? We also look at other areas that we can fund certain things out of Title 1, if staff, they request professional development, and we can move it into Title 2. So we look at their overall budgets and, before moving it forward in February and March, to the Finance and Facilities Committee. So a big thank you to them, because they meet several times to review each of the administrators' budgets and wish list items, and they ask a lot of questions, and we dive a little bit deeper, so they meet with each administrator to review it. And then on March 20th, if we recall, we presented the preliminary budget, and tonight I'd like to present you with the final budget. So we, our budget philosophy is our level 1 requirements are our legal requirements, so there's going to be some things in the budget that we have, that we have no choice but to, but to spend money on. Obviously, things like anything that comes from the New Jersey Department of Education that would be a requirement, special ed are legal requirements. Level 2 would be required by board policy. For example, if we had to hire more staff than usual because we changed, recently changed our graduation requirements, and, you know, we have to have more staffing as a result, or whatever that is. So, but more policy governance are level 2 decision making. And level 3 decision making are items that, in the fiscal budget, that are not required, but a high investment from the community. So for example, if we wanted to spend money on mental health, social emotional learning, our athletic program, our music program, detracking math, those are things that we really believe in as a community, that we want to support, and those are level 3 budgeted items. And then usually, there's something else, because that's all the budget. So you'll see the budget presentation tonight, we maintain fiscal responsibility. So some of the areas we have to address for the fiscal responsibility is the continued increase in costs for students with disabilities. You'll see that the out-of-district tuition rates have gone up, transportation, and increased transportation costs have gone up. Even the increase in cost for students with disabilities, we're opening up more sections of classes that you'll see tonight, so all of that comes with the cost as well. You'll see some facility maintenance. We're very, very lucky in that between the federal grant money that we've received over the past couple of years and some money that we have in capital reserve and maintenance, we're able to fund most of those facility projects without a problem. We have some federal and state mandates that we have to meet. And of course, contract obligations, so obviously, we have two collective bargaining agreements, the HPAA and the HPDA, so we have to meet those contractual obligations with health benefits, so you'll see that as a big ticket item. And obviously, personnel is always a really big ticketed item for school districts. So I know I spoke a little bit about special ed, so I just wanted to pop in some of our numbers, just to, to give you a background for this school year. We have a total of 340 classified students in the district, which makes up about 21% of the students in the school. Right now, we currently have 22 students in the referral process, which is pretty, pretty high from this time last year. And total referrals this year up to date were at 125. So I know, I'm not sure, I was texting back and forth with DeeDee, she was dealing with the legal matter all day today, but I think that's at least 25 to 30 over what we had from last year in terms of total referrals. So our special numbers are increasing, so I wanted just to put that in perspective for you all as we go through the budget. We did get an increase in state aid, which is phenomenal. The district, the state is much closer to funding the original formula for financing public schools in New Jersey, so we're really excited about that. So hoping that we'll stay consistent and if not, get to a level place where we are fully funded by the state in terms of that formula. Our budget will enable the district to maintain that our schools are fully stacked with highly qualified personnel. We will be able to maintain our current class sizes, so the good news is we do not have to cut any teachers to decrease class sizes, so I'm very happy about that. We're able to provide the high level of instructional resources to support the standards and align to the standards, which is fantastic. Same thing with our instructional programs, so I'm happy to report no cutting of programs. In fact, you'll see that we're actually going to be able to add a couple of programs, which is phenomenal. Like I said, we're able to maintain some fantastic facilities projects, including some roofs, some, you know, larger scale projects, so we'll get to some of our maintenance projects in a little bit. And then we are still able to provide courtesy transportation for students on hazardous routes, which is the river road area of town. Like I said, the upgrades, which we'll talk about, and then again, our district budget will start to phase in, beginning the five-year plan to expand preschool to full day for all 3- and 4-year-olds. So you'll see that we're starting to do that as well. In addition, opening up more special ed classes to accommodate our special ed students. So in terms of doing that, I am requesting some personnel needs as part of our budget this year. Like I said, the numbers of referrals have been extraordinarily high this year, and as a result, we definitely have the need for a school psychologist at Bardell to do some of the testing and take, our caseloads are incredibly high, and we want to provide the same continuity of services to our families of special education students, so we'd like to hire another school psychologist. The school psychologist in particular can help with the testing over a social worker in terms of case management, so we'd like a school psychologist. We are planning on a couple of students in our current LINGS program, which is students with emotional regulation impairment. They are moving up to the high school. For a small number of students, it doesn't make sense to open up a particular self-contained class for these students, nor is it developmentally appropriate for two students to be in a class together, so they will be in, they're at least restricted classroom environment, but we'd like to hire a BCBA, which is a behaviorist, and this actually will service the middle school and the high school to help with any kind of behavioral challenges that might come with their special education needs. This person would also, the behaviorist, would also service the middle school for behavioral challenges, including scaling up our autism class. So we have some students at Bardell that will be aging out of Bardell in fifth grade in our autism program and be going to the middle school. So if you go down to the middle school, we are opening up an autism class at the middle school, so we will need to hire an autism teacher, and each of those classrooms comes with a para, so a para dedicated for that classroom. In addition, we'd like to request a part-time dance teacher and a part-time theater teacher. These are as a result of New Jersey Department of Education mandate that we must teach dance and theater at the middle levels, so we are looking for a part-time dance and a part-time theater teacher. In addition, as for our special ed needs, our population of students that are learning and language disabled at the middle school are growing, so we will need to open up another LLD class. For those who aren't familiar, we call that our Flow Junior class, so we will be opening up a second section of Flow Junior, so we'll need an additional classroom teacher for that and an additional classroom para. And you have to understand too, when I'm talking about special education classes, the state does have mandates on the number of students that we can put in these classes, and so when we cap out, meaning we cannot put any more than a certain number legally into a classroom where you have to open up a new class. At Bardell, we would like to hire a math interventionist. So at the middle school, we have a robust intervention program. Right now, Ms. Saka has been working all year with our new interventionist to, to work with them, to really make the class intervention and have been helping there. We have ways to increase math intervention at the middle school without additional personnel. We do not have Bardell, so right now at Bardell, it'll service four grade levels and almost 500 students, we have one math interventionist. So we would like to hire a second one as a response to some of the data that we're seeing to support, to support math instruction. Not in the operational budget, but what you'll see in my May 15th presentation is that we are hiring a second ELA interventionist at Bardell as well. However, that's not in the operational budget, that's coming under our ESR funds, from, ESR 3 funds from the federal government for the COVID relief money. In addition, we'd like to hire an assistant principal at Bardell. The issues of behavior have become really challenging for Ms. Knapp. Ms. Knapp is a very, very, very instructive instructional leader, and I'd like her role to stay in that capacity as helping with staffing and with coaching those teachers to be better teachers and handle instructional issues that come up in their classroom. But dealing with discipline and restraining students and things like that all day can weigh that down, and the staff don't necessarily get the help that they need. I do have some central office staff, but they are K-12, so they service all the buildings for math and ELA, so I'm looking to hire an assistant principal to help with the student support aspect of it while freeing Ms. Knapp up to do the instructional leadership component of the job. At Irving, there is a need for an additional ELA interventionist, so right now we have Ms. Silverman as our wonderful and world-class ELA interventionist. We'd like to hire a second one there because we're seeing the need down at Irving, and we're hoping that if we hit Irving and Bardell a little heavier, over time, we will see some change in our data as well. And like I said, we have ELA and math at the middle school. We have some creative ways to be able to utilize the staff and the programs that we have there more effectively. At Irving, we need to open up an additional LLD class with an LLD classroom para. In addition, we do have to increase our preschool disabled teacher and para professional to full time. So the preschool money that we get covers general ed students, but it doesn't cover special ed students, so we need to be mindful in our budget. That's why I went back and saying our budget reflects our move to full time, because our staff that are part-time that we cover in the operational budget, we have to make to full time. So you'll see that change in the budget as well. So Lynda and I will talk about the details, the mini-gritty, the nuts and bolts, the money, people want to see the money. So first and foremost, Lynda, you want to talk about some revenue and state aid? It's very exciting.
Let's see, okay, well, as Dr. Nikosia reported, we are seeing a nice increase, a very healthy increase in state aid this, for next year, it's a $1.6 million increase, which will help to fund all of those additional positions that we need, as well as the increases in our costs. The funds anticipated to transfer from one year to the next is what we anticipate having left over due to being fiscally prudent with our funds, which will help to support our budgetary needs on the expenditure side. The transfer from capital reserves is increasing by 1.3 million because we are taking a large amount out of our capital reserve to fund some very large projects for which the state will be funding 40% through grants from the school development authority. So we're taking advantage of the funding from the grants while also contributing our share of the cost, which is a 60% share. We have several maintenance projects that we want to accomplish this year, which is we increase the amount of projects we want to do that will require a withdrawal from a reserve we have for maintenance projects. So we're increasing our withdrawal by $58,000. And the transfer from emergency reserve will help us, the $200,000 will help us to support the very large increase in health benefits that we experienced in January of this year, which of course will carry it to next year, and of course, with the historical increases we have to anticipate, a lesser increase than what we had, but we never know what's going to happen in January. This year, we experienced a 15.6% increase in our premiums, most of which the district has to shoulder. The extraordinary aid represents additional funding that we get, that we apply for from the state for the cost of special needs students that are extraordinary, that are above what the state considers to be an average cost. We never know how much we're going to get, so we anticipate, $700,000 is what we're anticipating, which is an increase of $100,000 from what we received this past year. And as long as the state has healthy reserves themselves, then they will be able to support what we request at a more percentage. They, basically, they will split what they, they will dolm out the aid based upon what they have. We asked for 1.2 million, we get an 1,000, because that's all the state can give us, because they have to spread it out on the entire state. But it's still a nice, healthy amount to help us to pay for all the special ed students. Then, the biggest amount of our funding comes from the property, the taxpayers in our town, and that is the general fund and debt service taxes. They support our general operating costs, plus all the bonding that we have done for prior debt bond projects, such as the building of the extension, expansion of the middle school at Irving School back in 2006. That is going up by 1.1 million, 1.2 million, the bulk of which is in the general fund side. Debt service is actually going down a little bit, tiny bit.
Okay, so in terms of our expenditures, so you'll see that our school supplies and extracurricular activities have gone up about, you know, a little over $48,000, and this is due to some classrooms that we have to open, so for brand-new classrooms, we need to outfit them with furniture, with their supplies, their resources. But in addition, just pricing alone has gone up through supply chain, so everything is much more expensive now, so you'll see that, you know, that cost has gone up. You'll see that, you know, does that include the transportation for athletics, extracurricular activities?
Transfer, uh...
Extracurricular activities?
Yes, it does, yes.
So as I said, transportation has gone up for athletics?
It sure has.
It has, so that's another thing that's in that personnel line item, is the transportation for athletics. Oftentimes, the only availability that we can get are the coach buses, and they're a little bit more expensive too. We want to make sure that we continue to fund and support our students that participate in athletics, so that's very important to us. In terms of district operations, including capital improvements, that has gone up, and that is some of the projects that we're working on. So the list, you want to go, like, the list is in the...
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda. The 1.3 million that I talked about coming out of capital reserve, that's funding a large part of this 1.7 million. So you can see that the increase is not going to be as much coming out of taxpayer money and state aid, but, let me just pull this out. Some of the projects that we will be conducting from the 1.3 that we're taking out of maintenance reserve, or capital reserve, is we are getting a new backup boiler at the middle school. We are doing a, applying for a grant from the state for, to upgrade the electrical service at Normal School and replace unitments also at Bardell School. Those are, in the, each classroom has a unit ventilator to help supply heat and fresh air. And we are applying for another grant from the state to replace several roofs at our Irving Primary School and at the Highland Park High School.
And then we have district curriculum instruction and professional development, so that's going up $24,000. Again, a lot of curriculum writing. Got to love the state when they push out new math and ELA standards, will be pushed out shortly, social study standards, we have to be in compliance with, so you'll see a lot more curriculum writing coming out. So my curriculum and instruction committee, you'll have some stuff to review toward the end of the summer and early fall, lots of social studies curriculum, so you'll see an increase there. Salaries, over $1.3 million does an increase in salaries. It's a good, happy chunk of our budget, obviously, is paying staff, so you'll see an increase there, and that's due to, obviously, we have some new staff that we need to hire, but also the increase in the raises on the salary guide for our staff, for our staff as well. And like Ms. Hopola said, benefits have increased, so you'll see over $1 million increase in health benefits, and that is what it is. We have, we broke it down too, so you can see, of the salaries, what of that is special education, so you can see that our special education salary has gone up a little over $630,000. And then, special education out-of-district placement in terms of our budget, this includes transportation, has gone up over $327,000, and our special education in district costs has gone up over $134,000, and circling back because our special ed needs have been growing. So looking at expenditures in terms of our out-of-district special education population, you'll see that the out-of-district tuition has gone up, 380, over $381,000. Our actual numbers that I think I did in our preliminary budget showed that our number of out-of-district students are actually down. The number is down, but like I said, tuition has increased in all of these schools, so unfortunately, our, fortunately, our numbers are down, but unfortunately, their tuition is up. So, you know, the plan that Ms. Teeter and I are working on is still continue to try to keep the numbers down and see if we can, you know, continue to help our robust programming that we offer here in Highland Park to try to bring some of our students back in the district as appropriate. Our out-of-district transportation costs are down by a little over $46,000, which is promising as well. And that, thank you to Ms. Hopola, she does a lot of work with shared services and transportation. We approved one recently for Essex, I think, County Joint Commission, to try to get some shared costs, so thank you to Ms. Hopola to try to work on keeping those costs down. So, your favorite slide, Lynda, is this, "Understanding the Tax Implication."
I think there are several board members who agree with me that the formula for taxes is a little bit complicated, a little bit. We work on a fiscal year, that's July to June. Your taxes are computed on a calendar year basis, so there is going to be a timing difference. So when we say our budget is going up by 3.78%... So when we say our budget is going up by 3.78%, be due to the timing of the taxes, you're paying the second half of the year we're living in right now and then the first half of next year for this calendar year. So when you see your taxes go up or down, it's reflective of the changing in the timing. So, and that's what I'm trying to say in this slide, that the taxes are split into two, between two calendar years. We have our July to December is part of 2023, and then the January-June will be part of your 2024 taxes. So when you see your rates, and also to compound the, or complicate the issue, Highland Park just went through a revaluation of all the properties, very, very delayed. I think it was 20 or 30 years since the last time. So the change in the overall valuation of all the properties, residential and business in Highland Park, went up quite a 3-point-something times the current number. Your property values went up also, but the percentage that they increased or tripled was slightly less. What that happens is your numerator and your denominator don't go up the same way, and this is actually benefiting you because the denominator went up higher than the numerator. If any of you understand how that works with math, you'll understand that actually is to your favor. So, on my head, should I try?
Smiling.
Yeah, more smiling. It is a little bit complicated. There are several moving parts to this equation. The bottom line, though, is that even though our tax increase that we're collecting is going up by 3.78%, in this calendar year, you're going to see a decrease. I will warn you, 2024, we'll see an increase because that's the way the timing's going to work. So the 2023 is going to see a decrease of $479.81. But as I said, we are doing overall fiscal year increase of 3.78%.
So lastly, the budget information will be posted on the website. You go to www.davidgaver.com, there will be a button that I will post tomorrow morning with the budget information.
By the end of the week, well, actually, within...
My presentation.
Oh, yes, yes.
My presentation, but yours, too, so from the budget.
There will be a user-friendly budget posted by the end of the day Wednesday. I still, I'm not allowed to go into the state budget program until tomorrow.
Well, my presentation...
Actually, we're going by the county, Ms. Teter. So, yes.
Okay. And so I will open up the floor to questions from the board. And let me just stop sharing so I can see faces.
This is kind of a silly question, I should know the answer to. Linda, when you mentioned that revenue comes primarily from tax loans, tax intake, and debt service, how does the debt service operate as revenue? What does that mean?
So we have revenues to support expenditures, of course, that you have to balance, to balance, right? On the debt service side, we have a special fund called debt service fund. When we have to pay our bonds and the interest on those bonds is being paid out of a separate fund category of accounts called debt service fund. And the revenue that we receive in taxes, we also receive some revenue from the state to help pay for the debt service. That's coming out of those, that fund separately. So we calculate how much has to be withdrawn from taxes based upon how much we get from the state. We're actually back into that number. But because our debt overall costs each year is going down because the interest is going down, it's not like a mortgage where it's flat, it's the same amount every single year or month. It's based upon what is your balance and what is the interest on the bonds that are still out there. And we, our bonding, financial advisor, bonding agency, when we go out for the bonds, they structure the payout of the bonds so that it's either as flat as it can be, flat line standard, you know, as close to the same amount every year as it can be, but it will go down usually a little bit every year. So, so, did I answer your question?
I think I might have like a preliminary question that I think so, sort of. Not necessarily spending deficit in your explanation, but we're understanding. So when you, we talk about debt service as an item of revenue, that's income from the state to help us pay off our debt?
There's two sources of income. One is debt service aid that we get from the state.
Debt service aid.
And then it's not that much money, it's like $8,000. And the rest is coming from the property taxpayers, who voted on it back in 2006, when we wanted to go out and get bonds to pay for a bonding project.
So when I pay my property taxes, I'm paying both for the current expenditures and for the past expenditure?
Yeah.
I see, okay, got it. Now, your debt service side, you're like, how come we're not paying out? We're getting in for the...
Yeah.
I got it, okay.
It's the service, or pay for our debts that we bonded many years ago. And I might point out, have refinanced a few times, lowering costs each time. And if you remember, there were some years where we saved $50,000, $100,000, usually you see it in one year.
Yeah, you saved a huge amount of money for us recently, about a couple of years ago?
A couple of years ago, we had a great, a great refunding of our bonds because the interest rates were so low. Remember those days? Not right now.
Yeah, no reply right now. Nobody replies right now.
Yeah, don't do it now.
Don't do it now. Thank you so much.
Can you break down the increase in healthcare costs by, some of it we're getting a property cap exemption and some of it we're taking out of emergency reserve? Can you break that down? And then explain what happens in the future, because we obviously can't do that every year, right?
No, no, well...
So how are the funds in the emergency reserve that we take going to be replenished?
Right, so at the, at the meeting in June, the second meeting in June, every year, I, before the meeting, I look at where our finances are and what we think we might have left over at the end of the year. I look at how much we've obligated already during, right now, to put into next year's budget. And then I anticipate, what do we have, think we might have some left over. And then there are three places that every year I will propose a resolution for approval to replenish those funds, basically. So we will draw from those funds during budget time, and then in June, we will try to put money back in. You know, so basically putting it back into savings toward anticipated future needs. So the emergency reserve fund, one of the uses of that is to help support increased costs for health benefits. And so we try to keep $200,000 or $250,000 in there just in case. And this is one year when, this is like our rainy day fund, when you have the huge increase that nobody anticipated, this is what it's there for, and that's why we use it. But on other years, when, past couple of years, we saw premium decreases. So we, the money just stayed in there, we didn't withdraw from it. It just sat in there, earned a little bit of interest, very little, because the interest rates were so low, remember? And then it's just there for the reason, that's a whole reason we have that account. So in June, I anticipate trying to put money back into there, depending on what our financial situation looks like. The other two accounts of reserves that we try to allocate money toward is the maintenance reserve for all of those maintenance projects that we do, and then capital reserve. And we're going to try to put a lot of money in there because we're taking a million three out right now. So we started the year, I think, with a million seven. So we have, we will be deflating the capital reserve by quite a bit, but it's for very good reasons, good purposes. And because we're getting 40% funding from the state, not, we get approval, we'll need to try to replenish that because you know we're going to have more roofs to replace or more other big ticket items. We have a long-range facility plan with a three- or five-page deficiency list, and we try to tackle those big projects when we can get the funding. And, you know, if we can get some grants, that's icing on the cake. Do I ask your question?
Yeah, I think so. Was it about half the path?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I went off. I'm sorry. I do that. I go off. No. So, so the health benefits, when you have a big increase over 4%, the state allows you to take what's called a tax waiver for extraordinary increases in health benefit costs. They can't, they say, well, you can increase from 4% up to this percentage because we know you've got costs that you're not going to be able to support with just your regular budget. So you can increase your taxes by the maximum of this amount. And it's a computation that is in the budget application on the state's website. So if we don't go to the full amount that we are allowed to go to, we are allowed to bank this for future needs. So we can use that in a future year, but we need it. We need it this year. So we're taking the amount that the state has allowed us to increase, the waiver. It's called a waiver.
But the good news this year is that even with taking that and going up to 3.78%, taxes will go down on the, on every property because enough new radibles have come on to our town.
Yes, yes. Other questions for Christina? Okay, then we will, everyone's public comment. Now, this public comment, well, you read here, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments on the 2324 budget. So specifically, the comments are about things that are in the budget. Again, we'll have another public comment later, and it's open to all topics. Board policies 0164 and 0167 establish and regulate the right of public to participate in public meetings. So this is a three-minute time limit. If you have anything you want to say, please raise your hand and introduce yourself, and we're welcome to hear your comments. Seeing no hands, we are going to move on. Here we go. Oh, then I'm moving to the best budget, right? Okay. So this is a resolution to adopt the 2324 budget. I move the Board of Education, except the recommendation of the superintendent, to approve the following resolution to adopt the 2324 budget. Can I read this whole thing? Okay, so we're just moving to, we're moving to accepting, you guys will read.
Second.
Any more questions? Ms. Casalda?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicollo?
Yes.
Ms. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Rizovich?
Yes.
Ms. Borges?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Nikosia, to Ms. Hopola, and all the people who work in this budget. We bring a lot of good things to the schools with it and still keep things balanced, so this is great. Thank you all. We're going to move on then to committee reports and items to review. Curriculum instruction, your report?
We did not have a report tonight, our next meeting is tomorrow. The only other item on the agenda is the resolution to approve the two field trips requests as attached.
Mollie does not hear, but I don't think we have, we have someone's report, that was done last week. Finance facilities, Chris?
We didn't meet, so I don't have a report. There are items two and three, travel reimbursements to, and three is for professional services.
Personnel, Ann? What you did, you got the wall points, right?
Two seconds, please. Let's take the time. All right, I'll do the committee report, second, something behind. Let me see, it's pretty self-explanatory. Just checking to see if there's anything not self-explanatory. Okay, I think one through nine on the personnel list are self-explanatory. I sent out my budget notes very belatedly, I'm sorry, my personnel committee notes, excuse me. Let me just take a quick look. All right, so most of what is in the report is either listed here, or it's confidential that you guys can ask me questions or ask Dr. Nikosia or Marilyn questions offline. We did discuss the progress of interviews for our new business administrator, and I believe that we're engaged in the final interview process slash negotiation slash job offering stage of the game. So while we will miss Linda Grayley, we may have a new business administrator candidate for Christina to present to us at an upcoming meeting. We did talk a little bit, when we were talking about personnel hires proposed in the new budget, we did talk a little bit about whether some of those might be deferred to attempt to lower the rates for the after-school program. And Dr. Nikosia explained to us that statutorily or regulatorily, we are not permitted to use our operational budget to offset costs in the before-and-after-school program. So in other words, we can't sort of not hire a dance teacher in order to lower rates for before and after-school. So that was just to answer board members' questions. Now, my understanding is we have not decided on new rates for before and after-school, but I know people are aware that we have been discussing the possibility of raising them just to make sure the program remains solvent. So that is not a way to make the program solvent, apparently. Let's see. So the other stuff we discussed, Dr. Nikosia went over in great detail during the budget presentation. Let's see. Okay, you'll see that we have, let me see, is that on the agenda? One second, please. Sorry, I should check that out beforehand. The issue of the youth safety specialist is not yet presented on the agenda. I'm right about that. Right, so we discussed that position and the current stage of the hiring process, and we'll hear more about that at an upcoming meeting. And the policy for review is the one on corporal punishment, which we discussed last time. It's nothing substantive, it's proposed linguistic changes by Strauss estimate. So please take a look at it before our next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ann on personnel? Policy and regulations, no meeting, nothing new on here. I have no president's report, so who can write, all business?
I don't know if I want to, but I will. Today, we want to share, speaking of the before-and-after care, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. is the committee meeting, in which we will review the proposals, including our in-house proposal, to hopefully come with a decision at our next board meeting. So that information will be coming soon.
Okay, fantastic. So does that mean at the next, at the next voting meeting, we'll actually be voting for...
I hope so.
Okay, and that would be including voting for rates, right?
Correct. So that would be the proposal of which, whether it's rates for our in-house program and that sort of what that program has to offer, or whatever the proposal is that the committee agrees on.
Okay. So will there be a workshop meeting before we vote on the, vote, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of the credo.
So we have some options. We can move it forward, it would be voted on May 15th, or we can wait until June to workshop and vote on it. So we would have to, you know, something I could talk to Marilyn and Allison about in terms of what the vibe is of everybody to proceed. There may also all be contingent on how it works with the agreement, because some of the companies might have a certain window of time. If we delay, like, they have, maybe this summer to, because if we were doing this in-house by May, we'd be putting out the thing and saying, the brochure, saying, sign up now for next year, and already starting to be collecting sign-ups and all of that. So we're a little bit behind, so I'm not sure of the timing. I don't want to guarantee that we can workshop it and then vote. It might have to be workshop and vote at the same meeting, but I don't know, I can't make any promises.
Okay.
I won't know until tomorrow.
Thank you for trying. Obviously, ideally, we want to present to the public first.
Of course, of course.
It may be that when we present to the public, there may not be much choice because we're trying to keep the program solvent.
Yes.
And I assume that if, you know, if the rate increase is going to be significant, I mean, a lot of people in town talk about how 30% is just not feasible for them, that you'll, I'll be able to give a little bit of an explanation as to how that came about.
Of course, of course.
And we know it came about because there hasn't been an increase in many, many years, but sort of how the program's data flowed until now, because obviously, we're all concerned about the impact.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Did we do new business yet?
We did not, old business? Good, new business?
I was going to talk about the same thing a little bit Ann said because the meeting is tomorrow. So I, I'm still trying to see if I understand the funding structure of this whole thing, and I... And I think because all of us are going to be answering a lot of questions from the committee about this, I just like to see if I can say what my understanding is. And please, if I say anything inaccurate, please just...
That's unlikely.
Same thing. So this program was building up a reserve for a large number of years. And when the pandemic hit, there was a decision made about, you know, whether, how do we support the staff during the pandemic? Almost everybody else in the country was getting some sort of support from the federal government. Now, the thing that we call the after-school program in Highland Park, as you said, it's not part of the operational budget. On the other hand, so in that sense, it's run sort of like a business out of this enterprise hunting. On the other hand, my understanding is it wasn't eligible for PPP. Is that right? So, well, private businesses could support the epidemic staff.
Correct.
Essentially, with funds from the federal government. And so we could not. In fact, if this program had been a private program at this stage, that private program could have applied for PPP funds and could have supported their staff without the expense to the district. As a result, we're several hundred thousand dollars poor because of this. Is that correct? Yes.
Wow. I didn't realize they weren't eligible.
Yeah. Okay, now, the reason that, you know, districts' employees, such as our after-school program staff, are not eligible for PPP is I think the logic of the federal legislation was that ESER was awarded to the districts. And ESER was supposed to be some sort of substitute for PPP for school districts. But what you're saying is that this program, the way it's structured, is not eligible for ESER. Is that right? And, okay, so I guess, but on the other hand, these private organizations that we're looking at, some of them are eligible for ESER apparently. So I'm confused about what makes an after-school program eligible for ESER.
I'm not aware of an after-school program as being eligible for ESER.
I think, my understanding is ours is a childcare program. Childcare.
No, but I'm talking about the language in ESER. The language in ESER specifically says that after-school programs are eligible for ESER funding. So what do they mean?
No, no, no. We call it an after-school program, but it's not an after-school program. It's after-school childcare.
Now, what does the ESER solicitation mean? And they talked about after...
It means instructional programs, like our brothers are mentoring, tutoring, the instructional, dragon tutoring, those are instructional programs. Childcare is not an instructional program.
But some of these after, I mean, when I look at the, I was looking today at the website of the, you know, quote-unquote, "After-School Alliance", you know, for after-school programs. And they have suggestions about how to find private programs that are ESER-eligible. And I'm just wondering, how much tutoring does it have to have before it becomes an ESER-eligible program?
For example, we used to have after-school tutoring worked into the program. They were very hard to help us.
What's the official definition?
That was a very minimal amount of time. Ours, I think it has to probably be the majority of the time.
Yeah, and it's childcare, it's not an after-school.
But that's not my question. My question is, of the private programs that we're looking at, for example, do we know whether they're ESER-eligible or not? And if they are ESER-eligible, can we use ESER funds to subsidize the child?
We won't know until we review their proposals. If that's in there, I'm not sure if we need to ask.
No, we didn't ask them for sources of their funding.
But can we ask them whether they're ESER-eligible?
So, I mean, we can certainly go back and solicit that information. The concern is, the more we go back and get it, the longer delays in, number one. Number two, with our ESER funding, you have to understand that everything, when we get that money, we allocate money into buckets within the grant. You can move money from a bucket if you put potential items in a bucket. So if we say, "We want to use money for mental health and we want to use money for instructional programs", and then let's say we want to use more money for mental health because a new program we want to use, we can actually transfer money from one account to another within that because we already said, "We predict we're going to need money for mental health". If we don't predict we need money for whatever category we could use for that, then even if they're eligible, we still can't use our funds, number one. Number two, if we already have a predetermined for things, we don't have extra money, and there's no ESER for it, by my knowledge. So even if they are ESER-eligible, doesn't mean that we're ESER-fundable. I'm now making it worse. Okay.
Chris, did you mean, like, if they're getting money from the federal government, I mean, we want our parents to benefit from that money? Is that...
Well, I think he's saying, can we use our ESER funds to help subsidize the cost?
I see, I'm sorry.
But I don't think we can. Can they go get ESER funds to decrease their rates? I'm sure, I don't know. They could probably do a lot of things.
I don't know. So, ours, like, ESER, who ESER will fund, I don't really know.
Yeah.
I have a question and a comment to make. First, the question is, I didn't realize that ESER funding might still be available. I thought the ESER trade or...
I think it's final.
Was final money. And I don't know that that's available.
That will expire September 2024, so we have one more...
Oh, so one more year.
One more year. Can you still apply for more?
So as far as... No.
No.
No, that's what I mean.
Apply, no. We would have to reallocate what we've already applied for. But the only thing that I would say that we could use that would be in the after-school program possibly would be enrichment activities that would fall within the guidelines of what we are allowed to apply for ESER funding for. And we're focusing on everyone and, you know, offering programs that support the needs of all the children who are struggling.
Okay, I have a second point, though, that I want to make. And that is, when I spoke to some districts that I know, they talked about privatizing before and after care. An example, again, that I always use is East Orange, because I know, South Orange, excuse me. I know that district well. They were able to do it because the provider, the private provider, it's not, Chris, so it's ESER funds. It's federal funds. It's general federal funds. They can apply for those funds and have been able to for a dozen years before the pandemic. And so when they get those funds, particularly in cases where the district has a high proportion of free and reduced school lunches, they can get significant amounts of money, which we cannot apply for. And so that's the hope. And when you looked at some of the charts about what some school districts are paying for, for the privatized before and after program, their numbers in those cases are very low. But I don't think it's tied so much to ESER. I think it's tied to general federal funding. At least, that's what they told me.
I just find it interesting. And I think if you look at the federal legislation, it was clear that the people writing the federal legislation meant for after-school employees to have access to these funds. And it seems like in the actual realization of what actually happened, they weren't.
Right.
It's...
That's right.
And people just have fallen through it. This program and the parents are really getting the short end of the straw because of the way that it has been implemented.
But the other issue, though, which Ann mentioned, is that this program was started, I don't remember, 20 years ago and never had an increase in tuition. And so when you look at that, tiny amounts have been added over the years, maybe to bring this amount up by, from what it was 20 years ago, to below inflationary rates, even 10%, the program could have been solvent even with the pandemic. And that is a shortcoming with the district. No mistake about it.
I, just one more question. I mean, it's also not a business in that we can't take out a loan, for example, right? Like, ordinarily, a business that might want to face with a 30% price increase might go into debt for a year just to make it... But we're not allowed to do anything like that.
Wow, that's really quite a business. We can do a few businessy things, but nothing really useful. And we also can't fund the debt of funds.
People privatize.
Wow, yeah, I see why people privatize.
Right. And that's why it's problematic. It is, it's not ideal, but, you know, we're just kind of, we're faced in a situation and just trying to figure out, you know, how to be able to provide the not-required option of childcare after-school for our families because we do think it's really important and valuable, but trying to do it in a way that the students get, you know, a robust opportunity, you know, but also that, you know, it could work and it's not too taxing on the district.
Yeah, no, I mean, I have no belief or confidence that you guys are figuring this out in the best possible, fiscally responsible way. Let me not show any hesitation about that.
Yeah.
It's just that no matter how responsible we're trying to be, it's a huge challenge for families.
And it might not be 30%. I mean, some of the other companies might come in a little bit different. That was just our synopsis of what we would need. So our proposal might not be the cheapest proposal. Like, there might be, I don't know, I actually haven't... We kind of looked preliminary what was there, but I didn't look at it wholeheartedly. So that's what the committee's going to do tomorrow. Ours might not be the cheapest. In which case, we'll present that, say, ours is a 30% increase because of where our business is, you know, in relation to other people's businesses. So they might be in a better financial position to be able to support our needs.
Cool, that's awesome.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate for the public, we, I mean, we are hoping that if we do privatize or have a contractor run the program, we would still be able to hire our...
A thousand percent that is a non-negotiable in the contract.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Non-negotiable.
Wonderful, wonderfulness.
Yeah. We love our people.
Yeah, people are really worried about that as well.
No, but we love our people.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
And just to move, not only that, sorry, is that not only do they hire people, but in some of the proposals, we'll pay our rates.
Fantastic. Good, good, yeah, yeah, rather than sort of like...
But, right, but because they have access to government subsidies that we don't have access to, they can get the help, the free and reduced lunch families with cost. So they have access to more robust offerings. So not all of them, but we should see that some of them will have those things and be able to support our staff and at the rates that they're currently making.
That's awesome. It would also be awesome as a wish list item if we could... I don't know how their federal funding would work to assist families that are near the border because, as we all know, you know, free and reduced lunch, you have to be quite low-income to qualify for that. And we have many, many families that, like, "Oh, quite qualified", but are going to really struggle with this. So I don't know to the extent, what extent... I don't really expect to which the federal funding that these programs are eligible to apply for might also be used for our non-free and reduced lunch students. Is that not... Terms of easeability, yeah, we'll find out, yeah, what you guys build out. Great.
That's actually what I was going to ask you about, was the additional funding. Like, even though we're not eligible for those other things that we just talked about, they do have additional federal funding.
I don't think necessarily tied to the income levels that the national school lunch program poses. Right? Because that's a national, and they have funding at state available from state and other agencies, charitable agencies.
Right, and we're not eligible for that either. So it's not just...
Well, we used to be able to take advantage of certain funding, but then they made the requirements so longer, as there was just no way we could comply. Had to push that. But we had such huge reserves that we felt that we couldn't afford to just subsidize it ourselves.
Can't worry, right.
We have the older new business.
New business.
We have more business?
Yes, sorry. As previously highlighted by email. So the high school has decided that, effective today, identification will be required, not just to pick up students, but to enter the building. That's something that we, several years ago, we discussed at length in the safety committee, the central leadership type safety committee. It was before Dr. Nikosia joined as the superintendent. And there was a lot of, there was no consensus about this. And the reason was that we, there were concerns about undocumented families that might not have identification. And so we had, we were trying to come up with ways that we could sort of make sure that our buildings remain welcoming to those families without compromising security. There are a lot of suggestions, you know, printing out IDs for families as they come in. I think Marilyn had shared with me the suggestion made by someone on the committee that we could sort of check phone numbers, you know, "What's your phone number?" Check, does it correspond to the phone number of the person who, you know, that they say they are? I mean, I just wanted to say for the record, I would prefer that we had continued with that process before we decided to require IDs. If that had always been sort of framed as a district-wide decision that would be made with due consideration of district policy. So I was just very surprised to see that all of a sudden. And I wonder, do we know if the town's ID program got off the ground? Because that was intended to provide IDs for people regardless of immigration status. I just don't know if it happened. That would assuage some of my concerns. Does anybody know, Rob?
I can't remember.
I just, I knew it was, like, about to happen.
I wrote it down. I could reach out by next mayor meeting and ask her if she knows, but I wrote it down, check on it.
Fantastic, thank you. My...
If we're doing it, if we're doing it, if it's still off the ground, I think it's still available.
Oh, see, I've never seen a sign advertising it or a push notification advertising it or...
It's on, but I haven't seen it recently.
Right, but...
One of the proposals, a lot of the stuff came, and I emailed about this, but all the, this has come to the safety committee, certainly this year, the advice I had on it, and came from the audit, safety and security audit that we got this Friday, with the concerns that our, that this fellow, I don't know if I owe you to this, sorry, that there were many concerns about safety and security that we needed to tighten up throughout the district. And as the committee has met, Mark's been on there, I'm sure Chris, a few have been on there who've joined those meetings. People have been working hard. One of the issues was that some of our schools did not have a way of, I think, a pretty open-door policy, not have a way of knowing who was in their building, who was coming and going. And so certainly, that's something that they've worked on to tighten up. They are using the phone number, I guess, Dr. Nikosia said.
Irving is using a phone number on Genesis to identify somebody who says who they are.
So the parent comes who doesn't have an ID documented or, I guess, otherwise, I don't know, then they are using their, you're calling them from Genesis, considering that they have the phone that belongs to that parent or guardian.
And I was told that they have not kept anybody out of the school based on afterward belongs in the school.
Well, the high school, they just announced this on Friday, effective one day, effective today. So that needs to be made clear to families, if there's another way to qualify to enter the building. Now, I'm not talking about people coming in to pick up a student. I, you know, we want to avoid violating custody orders. And with the younger kids, obviously, we want to make sure nobody picks up that is not related to the student or not authorized. Those are really important concerns. But at the high school, right now, high school families receive a message saying, "Effective Monday, everybody needs to show an ID", and that's not acceptable to me. So I hope that we can improve our messaging to be clear if it is true that there are other ways to gain access. And that would need to go out in different languages, obviously, because we are mainly concerned with people that are potentially new immigrants to the country. The other thing I would hope, as I shared with Marilyn, I don't see an ID-to-enter requirement as helping safety in any meaningful way. I mean, if someone is coming in to do harm, what's an ID requirement going to do? Unless you surround the building in, you know, bulletproof glass, have it hold an ID up to the bulletproof glass, look at it, you know, this is not how we prevent stuff from happening. One way, one thing that we have, which is somewhat effective, in the same way an ID is effective, is you don't get into the high school unless you're buzzed in. Then you go in, you go to the desk, and you fill out a form, and you wear a tag. You know, so it's not like, it's not an open-door policy in the sense that the door is literally open and people can go in and hang out. You know, it might be open briefly during lunch.
The typical is to have closed vestibules in each of the buildings so that, I think, it's probably good to that more so.
Well, right now, and we don't have that in the high school. So an ID requirement is going to require Mrs. Colletton to, like, walk up to the door, peer through the glass.
We have a camera there, so the idea is that she's, well, they're getting it replaced, but the idea is to hold it up to a camera because it's the only, unfortunately, that's the only building where we don't have the vestibule in nature to be able to do that. I will say that we've had to enact the civility policy a couple of times this year on parents that have been incredibly grueling and incredibly disrespectful and threatening to staff.
That's okay.
One such was a parent that was visiting a child study team member at the high school, and they've received several letters of violation and have been asked to stay off school grounds unless they're here to pick up or drop off a person. And he came onto school grounds, but the issue that nobody, you know, recognized it. There was this nod, it's like, "Oh, I'm here to see so-and-so in the child study team. Okay, come on in", and that person wasn't allowed to be in the building, and it became a whole situation. So it's not a reoccurring thing, but I think that, coupled with the change in climate out there, I think the staff are just a little unsettled. And I think if it's something simple as, you know, an ID or asking for a phone number or ways that we can just make people feel a little bit safer, I think that would really go a long way with staff.
Okay, I'm absolutely happy to, you know, contribute to staff being made to feel safer. Okay, I'm absolutely happy to, you know, contribute to staff being made to feel safer. But I would ask that the administration please consider messaging out in other languages an alternative to the ID requirement for our families that might not have an ID, such as the Irving, Genesis phone number plan.
Yeah, okay, so I will. They should know they're supposed to be doing that, but I guess the message wasn't clear.
No, it was in English, and it said, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it's possible that messages are sent out...
They are sent out in any language you pick.
I see, so you pick at the beginning of the year, or something like that?
No, it's in Genesis. When you enroll in Genesis, you can pick your home, your official language that you wanted it. And then I, so what we, what I do, when I do mine, is I say, do it, and then I do an alternate one in Spanish to refresh it, and then it goes out. And then if you pick Turkish, it comes in Turkish, if you pick Russian, it comes in Russian.
So the push notifications that people receive, it's like, from mlasder@hp-schools.net, that comes out automatically in different languages?
In different languages that they're choosing. That's all self-regulated on their end. And we pushed out information on how to set that up.
Okay, and so, I mean, is that true of every message we get from high school administration that it always goes to Genesis and is totally...
The whole district, even me.
Anything based on that?
Anything.
Wow, I didn't know that, that's pretty good.
Yeah, in fact, some parents email saying, we're getting it in Turkish, but we actually want it in English, we changed. We're actually getting more of those emails than anything else, but we are adjusting, and the secretaries are making the change to push out.
That's great, I had no idea we had every single...
That's our new robust system.
That's wonderful.
And the languages are like, it was...
Fantastic.
Hardly even.
So if we could just communicate that there are alternatives?
But I think it's clear communication about, yes, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mark?
Could I just say that I was very disappointed as well, when I saw the message that Ann received as a member of the safety committee, and as a person who helped to suggest this method for the other schools. I would have expected that any school had said, we're going to an ID system, but if you don't have your ID on, I mean, I could write the sentence. You don't have your ID on it because you left it in the car, or because you don't have an ID, or for any reason, come in, give us your name, give us your child's name, your phone number, and we'll check that out. And if you're here for the right purpose, coming through a vestibule in three of our four schools, you'll be admitted to the building. And I was very disappointed.
So I didn't see, I don't see those.
You can't see it.
So I wrote it down to make sure that that information is clearly communicated to the creator of the, Chris, yes, thank you. No problem, thank you.
I would add one more thing, which is that the safety committee has talked about the fourth school, the high school, getting a vestibule. So all four schools can have a vestibule. So someone, you know, maybe they could somehow get in, you know, through a vestibule, break the door down or whatever, but at least it makes the school safer. At least the perception is better.
Correct. And then in the future, if there's any questions about communications, please direct them to me so that we can adjust accordingly.
Cool, yeah, no, I just, in my defense, as someone who sometimes...
No, no, I appreciate it back.
Somehow, no, no, someone who sometimes learns things out at the board table, that I perhaps should have discussed earlier, how I ran the agenda. In this case, I did attempt to highlight this point.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Trying to be more respectful of board proceedings.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
I just want to show that the municipal ID program is still active, it's still on the borough website, and you apply at the library.
That would be great, it would maybe be the much-discussed communication item. Think about that. Thanks so much for checking.
Okay, any other new issues? Then we're going to our last, our last public comment. The Highland Park Leadership welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 0164 and 0167 establish and regulate the right of public or stipate in public meetings. So if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Anyone want to speak?
I'll talk, yeah.
Okay. Time to talk to everybody. No one else wants to talk to us?
Anybody?
No, no one else wants to raise their hand, so you're in if you want to.
I didn't really, it's interesting, I'm actually just here to, what's going on? But I thought...
Oh, Ethan, address, sorry.
Ethan Schoolman, 423 Harrison Avenue. I could probably give a little bit of feedback on a past decision, or I believe, earlier this year, maybe, I hope I was correct, or decided that it was okay for students of Barbell to walk home by themselves, essentially. I just, as a Barbell parent, I think that's gone really well. My kids have, you know, I mind the job, talking about safety and that. Maybe my kids have walked home by themselves a couple of times, they walk to school sometimes, it's really helped to increase their confidence, walk home with friends, it's cool, a little social occasion, and so... And I know a lot of parents have been really, you know, happy with that, it's made things easier. You know, it can get right away, and that's easier. So I guess that's, that's it. Thanks for your great presentation.
Thank you. Thanks. That was always my kid's favorite part of the day, I was walking home with his friends, once he got old enough, I'm going to yell those.
Getting candy at Bright Aid.
Taking candy at Bright Aid, just have some, not taking candy at Bright Aid.
Don't take it for free.
Don't hurt somebody. Oh, at Bright Aid, yes, getting candy at Bright Aid, yes, that was the second best part. Highland skirt.[1787.77]